Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to those of you that are here and those of you viewing from home. This is the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five Farmington School Board meeting. Call the meeting to order and ask that you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we're going to run a public hearing in conjunction with our board meeting. I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time. To the inhabitants of the town of Farmington, you are hereby notified that pursuant to New Hampshire RSA one ninety-eight colon twenty dash C two, that on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at five thirty PM, the Farmington School Board will be conducting a public hearing for the purpose of the district's proposal of expending funds from the Farmington School District Kitchen Equipment Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a new freezer invoiced at fifteen thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars and forty-four cents. That public hearing will take place at Farmington High School, Forty-third Drive, Farmington, New Hampshire, in the library. This was posted prior to ten days to tonight. And the need for the freezer was discussed a couple of meetings ago. Is there anybody at this time that has anything that they would like to say in reference to the subject matter of the public hearing? Okay, I'll probably keep this public hearing open through the duration of this meeting, and then we'll close it out and vote on this. I will give people a chance that if they come in and want to discuss or ask any questions about it, that they can. Is there any regular public participation at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go down to the minutes. I'll entertain some motions.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May fifth, two thousand twenty-five, public session, non-public session, one, two, and three.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Johnston. Discussion on any of those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, public session, as well as non-public session one, two, three, four, and five.
And just to note that one and two are sealed. We did have a chance to review those earlier. So a motion by Mrs. Lozey, second by Mrs. Johnston. Any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented of May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, public session and non-public sessions one, two, and three.
Motion by Mrs. Lozey. Second by Mrs. Johnston. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Down to reports. Farmington High School, you up? How are you?
Good, yourself?
Good, thanks.
It's been a little bit hot. So just quickly, I'll just go through a couple of quick things. First, we'd like to say thank you to the facilities. They did a marvelous job this year. Larry and Giselle really kind of got them together, and they've been going through and really hammering everything else. The floors look probably the best I've seen them. It's really, really remarkable how quick they were going through things and enjoying themselves this year. When you see them, they're all working together, talking. I'm sure there's some behind the stuff when they get a little frustrated, but other than that, it's really, if you walk around, it's beautiful. These floors are still finishing up. They should be done by tomorrow, but other than that, we're good to go for facilities, so it's been great.
While you're on that topic, I can just say, and I probably always say this every year and I sound like a broken record, but it amazes me how many folks come into athletic events throughout the winter and refuse to believe that this building is just about thirty years old. It's just, they just can't believe it, so.
And when I walked in, though, two years ago, a little over now, but a little over two years ago, I mean, this place is beautiful. I mean, it really is. It's a beautiful place, and it doesn't look its age. There's a few things that, you know, obviously
Of course.
Need some upkeep, but other than that, it's a beautiful place. So marvelous job for facilities every year, and this year especially. Sports, just briefly, we started the season on Friday with football doing tryouts, and today, those continued with the rest of the fall sports. So it looks like participation's really great. Kevin also threw in there that there's a new fundraising thing, though it doesn't make a lot of money off of it. It does give people an opportunity to buy other things than just clothing to participate in. So that's out there. And then there's a couple of, like, ways to have for companies to sponsor us, and we put up things on the fencing and that, like T-Mobile is one of them, who have a big contest that if you get selected as your school, then they go into a bigger contest and you can win, I think, a whole new makeover of, I think it's a weight room, but I'm not sure if that's the same thing this year. So there's a few things Kevin's looking into and trying to generate a little bit of extra money through sports so that they can, you know, do their stuff. Collaboration this year, it's really been great. I think that the admin have been really working together more so than the last two years and really trying to cement what it is for our goals. So we're trying to be on the same page. You know, Giselle really hit the ground running at the end of the year, gave us a direction, and we've really kind of taken to that to really do that. So, you know, it's just been really fun this summer to kind of work with someone else than trying to think of all that stuff on our own. School counseling, so really, the bulk of the summer has been trying to get these schedules done. I'm going to make addendum to what I wrote because it's a little off from what I said because the counselors weren't necessarily clear. So when I told them ninety, like, we're looking for ninety percent complete, I think they thought ninety percent of the schedules complete with other kids might have holes. So there's, I will show you the pile that I can see right now. The seniors are a little harder, so they have holes in them because they might not have classes. So I can't tell if they're done or not. That I don't know. But there is a lot in here that have, like, a second semester class that doesn't have a class yet, and I'm not sure if that's because they wanted to reach out to the student because they just didn't want to fill it in, and we have time to fill that in. And then there was a few extra classes here or there that was, like, first, and they probably couldn't get that student. The one problem that we did see at the beginning of the, or when we started this process, because we were on a timeline ourselves this year, was that the students that filled out the scheduling put in the classes they wanted, but they didn't fill it to eight credits. So we're now going in and placing them in classes, and that's going to work, but they might want to change some of those as they come in. So it's something that we have to be mindful of for next year. The ones that are complete that I can see at this moment are the smaller piles. So in their communication, I think it's, and I'm not going to try to talk for them, but there's only, like, one or two here or there that have, like, a class missing. So I don't know if they consider that ninety percent, but Giselle was pretty clear to have it done. It is not complete-complete, so that is on me. I didn't have that completed for you, but we're not in the same position as we were the last two years. Kids are walking in with schedules. They're just not necessarily complete, and those should be good to go. Most of them by the time they walk in. It's just some of those stragglers that we can't reach out to, we won't have.
And are the schedules loaded, the ones, the things that are done, are they loaded into Power School for students to see?
We were going to open them up. I didn't open them today. I just wanted to make sure with Lori, but I didn't really get a reach to her. And I wanted to talk to the counselors before I threw it out there, but we really wanted to see now with the schedules in there, what do the parents or the students see that might be wrong so that we have an idea? If there's a lot, let's start pulling them in next week as, you know, the teachers are kind of here on that Monday or at the end of this week if they can. So it's really just kind of seeing what's now out there now that the schedules are a little more complete than they were. We did have a few that, you know, saw right away, oh, LRTC two. I've reached out to them a few times. For some reason, they're not reaching back out to me. So I don't know, some of these kids that have spots are LRTC. We're just not sure if they made the list or not. Most of them do, if not all. It's just with some of them asking for the same class. They only take three spots usually. Sometimes they'll take four, maybe five, but if they don't have those spots, then those kids kind of get pushed or bumped out, and I'm not sure who those are. So there's a few holes because of that that we're just waiting on. But I've reached out two or three times. I've called, they weren't there, they said email. I've tried emailing three times. So I'll try again tomorrow, see if I can call if they're in the office. So we're just waiting on them. And then really, the seniors are, it's kind of having that conversation with them. Like, you have a lot of open space or you have some open space. Maybe apply yourself to something, go dual enrollment if we have the spacing for that. So it's kind of talking them into, some of them aren't going off to college, so they're not as concerned, but it always looks good if you're even considering it, is to have the fuller schedule. We ran into that a little bit last year where the seniors weren't necessarily looking at that as they were taking their classes. So we want to kind of emphasize taking those. But again, on me, the schedules weren't done, completed to the specification that it was said to be, and that's something we need to work on going forward so that I have that for you. But I can leave the two piles if you want to look through them. You can see the holes. So you can see the things. Usually, the top one, like this one, is a first semester, so it's something that they need to just fill in. And then the bottom of the split is usually the second semester. So I can put those out for you. I'll put them over there if you want them.
So when will students have access, do you think, and parents to Power School?
I was hoping tomorrow we'd start opening them up.
Once you have that.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure that when I was looking through them, because Amber was going through them this morning, just she had to look up a student, and we started noticing a few holes. So I was asking them what was going on and making sure that I understand why there's holes there, and then we're not opening up a can of worms by throwing it up there.
And the ones that are done, if those students signed up for LRTC, is LRTC kind of like plugged in there right now or not at all?
I think most of them have been plugged in if we believe they got in. It's just double checking.
When do, do you know when LRTC starts? I have a lot of parents asking too.
I think it's the same week as us. I heard it was the second and third, or the second or third, so.
So transportation for students who are new to LRTC, like, they're just gonna?
Well, we're going to send out, once I get the list, we'll send out an email. We'll send out an email anyway because the second is freshman orientation day. The third is every student. So our students, for the most part, sophomores, juniors, seniors, start the next day as they come in, so.
And then you said the eight credits. So most students, like, are signed up for seven and a half credits?
Well, when they signed up, they signed up for, like, six, or they signed up for, it's not that they didn't sign up for eight classes, they signed up for eight classes. What they weren't looking at is that some of those classes are half-year, which if, when they were filling it out and we didn't necessarily notice that, we saw that they had eight, we should have looked at the credits and said, well, you really need eight credits, not eight classes, because you need a full schedule. Some of them could do V-Lax and that, and then maybe that's why they left it open because they wanted to take a V-Lax class, which we have a few spots to do that in where they can come to the library. So there's other avenues for them to fill it in. It's just, we're not sure why they didn't fill it in or if it was just an oversight on our part. So that's something that we're going to be more mindful of, is have the advisors of those students as they come down to say, okay, look, you don't have eight credits here. You need to at least fill it in, and then we can always change it as the year goes on, like, as the summer goes on, and that would be much more helpful. This year, when we did the scheduling, when Lori was able to just place that in there, it generated much easier for us. So we were definitely in a better spot. We just, there's some missteps that we still are taking that we just need to, you know, as we're figuring all this out. But again, the completion is more on me for not making sure that these were, is directed. I think they misunderstood me with the ninety, but again, I don't want to speak for them. It should have been completed, but it wasn't.
Any questions? Staffing?
Yes.
How are we looking?
Good. So we have, really just waiting on a Spanish teacher that Giselle's going to put forward, and she's from Spain. So culturally, as long as she's good to go everywhere else, she'll come in, and then that immersion will just even be that much better for the students this year. I mean, it was sad that the Spanish teacher that we had left, she was really good.
Yeah.
You know, she comes from camp background. Yeah. Very, very good with the students, but, you know, this one coming in, hopefully she can fill those shoes and, you know, bring a different look to it that the other one didn't have the experience in, is actually living in Spain, understanding the culture more. But that's really it. And I, oh, we have a case manager that we're hopeful for to fill in.
Great. Much better off than last year at this time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just leave these over here for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Henry Wilson.
He's a little taller than me. Hi, everyone. I hope you've had a great summer. We've been really busy over at Henry Wilson. Again, just want to reiterate what Jason said, and huge shout out to Larry and the crew. Henry Wilson looks beautiful. We've been able to let teachers in as of today. They've started coming in. I think it's at least a week earlier than it was last year, so that's awesome. Teachers are really excited about that, so huge thank you, Larry and everybody. It's been great. I also want to publicly thank our leadership team who came in last week. Wes cooked pancakes out in the parking lot for them, not on the parking lot, but in it. And we had all of our leadership team there to talk about our goals for this year and how we want to structure our year going forward. So huge shout out to the Henry Wilson leadership team. All of our classroom teaching positions are full. We are still in need of, we could use another case manager. That would be awesome. We're not destitute, though. We're okay with what we have, and we're really lucky. We were able to find an admin assistant candidate who'll be moving forward this morning. So as far as positions go, we're doing really good. Wes and I attended the Drummond Woodsum Principals Academy with the rest of the admin team last week. The lines are starting to blur. But that was really cool, really helpful. Lots of new laws coming out from the state, but it was a really useful time that we spent together and a great time to just kind of collaborate. And I'll reiterate what Jason said about being able to work together this summer as an admin team with Giselle's leadership. It's been really smooth and helpful and lots of idea sharing, so we all can be headed in the same direction, on the same path, to best support students. So that's really good. I'm really happy about that. Let's see, open house September fourth at Henry Wilson. We'd love to see you, five thirty to seven. We borrowed an idea from Beth, and we'll have booths set up for families, PTO, sports, after-school clubs, all the different things was a great idea, so we decided to copy it. So again, love to see you there. The attached to your notes that Stephanie shared with you is our professional development roadmap. So go ahead and take a look at that when you have a chance. If you have questions about that, let us know, but that's just our goals and kind of the strategies we're going to use to meet those goals for the year. Another shout out to Sue and Caitlin, who've been working on schedules, which is awesome. And again, to Sue Spinelli for, we are getting our safety stuff up and running. She's made the little class lists that go into our lanyard so that if there's an evacuation or we have to leave the building, everybody knows where everybody is. So that's been awesome. No struggles to report at this time. Looking forward to a great year and reach out if you need anything from us. Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had, actually have a question. And it could be for you, it could be for Jason, too. Talk just a little bit more about Principal Academy. Who puts it on? Is it a one-day thing? Is it a multi-day thing? And just a little bit more about topics and things that are covered, please.
Yeah. It was a two-day workshop. It's in Meredith. It's put on, was put on by Drummond and Woodsum. The, I believe they're, they focus on school law. I believe it's an organization that focuses on school law. They're really good. And so one of the, part of the topics were going over the Parents' Bill of Rights. It was talking about suspensions. It was talking about ex, uh, Jason, help me here. Having a brain cramp. Oh, expulsion and special ed and how that all plays into it.
Okay, so more law-based.
It's very, yes, yes. It's all law-based stuff, but they, it was really great. They gave us a really nice bound book with all the new updates and all of the different pieces and components that they want to make sure that schools are aware of. We came back with some great ideas to share with Giselle that she'll bring forward to you guys, just of things that we want to make sure. We're checking all the important boxes that we need to be doing. And then she was going to also reach out to our legal counsel to make sure that they're on the same page as Drummond Woodsum is and so on and so forth. But it was, I thought it was really good.
Could you talk at all about due process and how that played out?
Absolutely, and how that goes in regards to special ed as well, yeah, so, yep.
Beth isn't here, but we have a report. But I would, I personally and the board can say no, have been not interested in it, but I would like, at some point, probably during the September board reports, to hear more about what each school's approach is to behavior management. What's the school-wide approach to behavior management? That's gotten lost in the shuffle the last few summers, and I'm going to keep bringing it up because I, I personally, and I don't know how the board feels, I just really, when I talk to parents, when I talk to some kids, and when I talk to staff, that theme comes up a lot, like, behavior. It's just one of the first things that people talk about. Not that it's crazy bad, but again, I think we, I'm curious what our, our school-wide approach is in each building. Each building's different because they're at different developmental stages, but I'm curious as to what our school-wide approach is. And again, I brought this up in the spring. If we talk to staff members, they should also be able to articulate what that approach is, not just administration. Does the board agree with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have Valley, did anybody have any questions on the Valley View report? Just looking it over. Oh, S, I almost missed the S, because it's on the flip page way at the top.
I thought you were going to skip me for a minute there.
I hope everybody has had a chance to enjoy their summer. I know that we're looking forward to everybody coming back. Very busy summer. We've been up to a lot of fun stuff. So one of the things that Officer Clark and I were up to this summer is we plan an activity for Heyday. So we got to see some of the kids that kicked off this past Saturday. So it was nice to see some of them over the summer and see, you know, how they're doing, and some that are excited to come back, and some that are excited but not, which I get, you know. We also met with the administrators of each building as well as Giselle to kind of go over sort of a review of last year and the program and what went well and kind of debrief on some major incidents that came up at the schools and just what we can improve and just kind of overall reviewing how things went. We are getting ready to do staff presentations for when everybody comes back and our craze presentation for the district, which is civilian response against active shooters. What else? It's been, we did building evaluations. Every year, we kind of go over areas for improvement and things that we've noticed. The cameras were upgraded, which was super helpful this year, so things like that. We kind of just put together a report of notes. Probably for the September report, I'm, will likely have another proposal for, for you guys to review and take a look at as some ideas for things going into the fall and later on as the kids get settled. We do have another raffle planned for when the kids first come back. So once they get back, we have a welcome back raffle for them from the SROs. It involves ice cream, so. Yeah. Does anybody have questions?
Any questions? Great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, unfinished business. Employee handbook. I spoke briefly to Giselle earlier today regarding maybe tabling this for tonight and get some more suggestions for this, right?
Yeah, I would like to table that one and the cell phone ban policy because I don't have it matching the handbook for the high school yet.
Okay.
So.
Do you have a motion to table these?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Johnston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Parents' Bill of Rights policy.
I put it in your folder. It matches what the School Board Association put out. It's the boilerplate one and the DEI policy. I did run them both by legal, but it's basically what was suggested.
My laptop just signed out, sorry. I have to sign back in. It's done that like every time.
Were there any major changes or?
I didn't make any major changes, no. Just, you know, if it was like insert name of district here, that kind of thing.
Right, yeah.
I may have missed some. As you're reading it, be sure to call me out on it, but.
Make a motion to approve the Parents' Bill of Rights policy and DEI policy.
First read.
Yeah, as a first read.
I did not catch this on the agenda. It's not DEI, it's AI. It's artificial intelligence.
Yeah. It's AI, their new stuff.
Well, can we do those separately?
Yeah.
Okay. So was that a final read for Parents' Rights?
Uh, yes.
Question by Mrs. Lozey to approve the Parents' Rights for, as a final read. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mrs. Johnston. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
And is the AI, is that a new policy?
Yeah, it was one of the suggested ones.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I just, yep, wasn't sure.
But is the policy identification is?
E-H-A-G.
E-H-A-G, okay.
Yeah, use of generative artificial intelligence.
Which I've been hearing a lot about.
Uh-huh, and what they suggested on this, and when I ran this one by legal, actually for both of them, they did recommend that we review them again in six months because they said that everything is moving at such a fast pace. We may want to add something in six months or change something in six months.
Right, because these are both new. They just went into effect. So we can, because they were brought up and discussed, we can do them as a final, correct? Read, we don't have to wait?
We have them in the board folder the last.
I know, I just want to make sure, but we didn't on record do it as a first read and then.
Oh, we don't have to.
Okay, all right, good. I just want to make sure.
Usually, it's a first read if we really haven't had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, perfect, yeah.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, no, and we've been talking about it, and she sent it to us. I just wanted to make sure.
There was a gentleman on the news line saying that AI is going to, we're going to have to figure out a way to make AI have nurturing characteristics so that they care enough about us not to take us over Sunday.
Yeah.
It was bizarre.
Bizarre.
But it was like, a little like, I'm listening to this and I'm going, it's a little like eerie. All right, so, did you make a motion?
No, I just had the question. No, Stacy did both, but then did it as one. Stacy, I'll let you.
I'm fine with a final read.
Yep.
With review in six months.
I'll second.
Mrs. Lozey, second by Mrs. Doyle. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And when we got to update those online, we could just put like a suggested update.
Like approved today, suggested review.
Sound good?
Meal rates.
I'm going to turn that over to Stephanie.
So I went to do the application with the state for our nutrition, USDA meals, nutrition reimbursement. I was informed at that point in time that we cannot keep prices as is. We have to increase, whether it be five cents, ten cents. The maximum that the state says that you have to increase is ten cents. You don't have to, you can choose five, but it is a requirement from the state, and we have to attest to it. So I needed to bring it back forward to you guys.
Wait a minute. The state's saying maximum is ten?
Yes.
Ten cents?
Ten cents.
On students?
On students' lunch accounts.
Okay.
So we don't have to go, we don't have to increase the rates by ten cents. We could do it by five. It would be to your discretion. But the maximum, the maximum required price increase, they would require you no higher than ten cents per year to increase.
Okay.
Do you have what it is now? I know, or it was in the, yeah.
It was the August fourth meeting, right?
I think so.
Right here.
Something tells me it was in July.
Yeah.
That was the mealtime accounts that you. Well, that was the mealtime accounts that you went over about zeroing out and the negative balance. That was the update on that one.
Right.
It was July seventh. It was new business, item A, meal prices twenty-five, twenty-six. We voted to, we had a lot of discussion, and we voted to have the prices stay the same.
And do we have to increase?
In my handwritten notes.
Do we have to increase adult lunches and breakfast, or just...
The only thing that we need to increase is lunches.
Just lunch?
Just the lunches, yes, because I did verify with her.
Okay.
With that.
What's the board's? Let me see.
I'll make a motion to increase student lunches by five cents. Second.
And that would be adult lunches too?
Yes, the only one that it wouldn't affect is you're obviously reduced, because that's from the state. But, yeah.
So...
So that would be from three fifty to three fifty-five for elementary lunch, three seventy-five to three eighty on the high school lunch, and from four twenty-five to four thirty on the adult lunches.
Motion by Mrs. Lozay.
I second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Tuition rates.
Okay, so we have two, um, two different tuition rates. One would be for employees, and, uh, we found out that the last time it was voted on was June fifth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and you had voted on staff tuition for the school year twenty-four. Um, and it was set at two thousand dollars for the first child, one thousand dollars for the second child, and five hundred for each additional child.
That was the staff?
That was for staff. And so, uh, we do have staff interested in bringing their kids, and I feel like it's something that we should probably maybe vote on yearly, and at least look at.
So, for the staff that had children here last year, they were paying that twenty-three rate?
Yes.
Okay.
How many staff have children attend here, do we know?
I know one definite, and I think two have inquired this year. So...
So was it two thousand for the first, and additional thousand for the second?
For the second, and then five hundred for each additional.
Do we have an update on our cost per pupil?
I do, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, that's okay, it came in late. And this is from twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. That was the most recent.
Can we just say it?
Uh, so for elementary, it's twenty-one thousand, three hundred, sixty-one dollars, forty-one cents. And for high school, high school is kind of a loose term, because it, it's part of Henry Wilson, you know, so it's a split there, but it's twenty-five thousand, seven hundred, thirty-one dollars, so. And for whatever reason, in the last column, it says preschool to twelve, twenty-two thousand, six hundred, fifty-five. So I don't know if they average that, I don't...
Yeah, I was gonna say, that must be an average.
Yep, so...
What's the board's thoughts?
So we're talking like four-ish kids?
She said one that she knows of, and two that are inquired.
One was, has multiple children.
Okay.
So, um, and then, yeah. So it could be maybe seven kids, eight kids.
Okay. For this upcoming school year.
Yeah.
And that's provided that we have space, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Just wanna make that clear for everyone that's watching and viewing.
When open enrollment starts, we're gonna be required to post that online, our space, per grade level.
That state, yep.
When, I should know this, and I don't know if I do, because I don't know if it's been relevant, but if... Well, it was a few years back here at the high school. If, um, if a staff member's child that's tuitioned in requires additional, um, services, special ed services, things of that nature, does that get added? I can't remember if that's additional costs, like it's probably just included.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I can't remember either. I think it only happened once that I can remember. I think we, we eat it, you know? I don't think it's been much of an issue, so I'm not gonna rattle cages about it, but, um...
I was under the impression that the student's town of residence is required to pay the special education fees. So if I was, so if I sent, if I paid for Declan to go to Governor Wentworth, and I paid five thousand dollars a year, because that's what it was for a teacher,
Anything over...
Then Farmington was responsible to reimburse Governor Wentworth for special education fees. I'm, I'm
I, I...
Almost...
Well, the reason I brought it up is...
Positive, but...
I'm not sure that happened here, but I think it can happen.
Yeah. Well, and...
Because it's a choice, like it's a perk, it's a benefit for the staff member.
Yeah.
So, because you're choosing to do that, but you're still paying taxes to your town.
Right.
If, when open enrollment...
It's a question for legal.
Yeah, when open enrollment begins, because what's that, January, right? Allegedly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at that point, does the tech, say, we have a teacher that lives in Rochester coming here, uh, br- sending their student here. Once open enrollment takes over, will we... Will they not have to pay the tuition?
Yeah, we'd be, it would probably be a little point at that.
Right.
Um, they would pay, Rochester would pay eighty percent of our per pupil. So, and the parent would be responsible for transporting.
Right. So it's really just to have something on paper until January.
And assuming that that happens
Right.
the, the way they're anticipating it unveiling.
Mm-hmm.
Rolling out.
We'll probably wanna work on. We'll have to, but new policy.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And we probably should outline.
Well, right.
So...
And we're looking like for state guidance, and what like that looks like, uh, how...
Right.
I'm sure you guys are gonna have to vote on what our sizes are, and so forth, and so on, and when we post them, and what's the availability. Um, because we won't be turning down students. Very few cases will we be, you know, turning down students.
Okay, we have a motion on this proposal? Do we wanna keep it the same?
I'll make a motion to, um, keep the tuition rates at two thousand dollars for the first student, one thousand for the second student, and five hundred dollars for each additional student at this time.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle.
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Johnston, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have tuition rates, part two. Because we do have parents that have requested keeping their students here. Um, they might have moved or whatever, and so just to, you know, have a price for anybody who inquires until open enrollment, and will that be our cost per pupil? Would that be what, you know, what should that be if somebody calls and inquires?
Uh, did you happen, did you happen to ask legal that, like how other districts do that?
Um, we had reached out to the state, and they said it generally is between the two parties, and it can be anything, and a lot of, um, districts do it as their cost per pupil. So...
Uh...
Some people do it at, at like, you know, a percentage, because they'll take off for transportation, because typically, transportation's not included, so...
I personally would like a recommendation from legal.
Okay, yeah.
Just because I think they see it way more than we do.
Yep.
Um, I assume those parents want that answer before the start of school, though?
Mm-hmm. I, I gave them a ballpark, and I, I don't think they're gonna take us up on it, but I do think it would benefit us to have a price, you know, as it comes up, to be able to answer.
Yeah, and then if we have to, if we can get at least three of us together to vote on that before the start of school, in case anybody's acquiring potentially.
I, um, and I don't have a problem getting advice from legal, I'm just wondering, like, why we would need that to set a price for what we want to charge students right now until open tuition?
Because I, I would like to see us avoid just throwing a number out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If legal says, geez, with the, all the districts we work with, they go by their cost per pupil price.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't do that, and we, you know, I don't want us to potentially be taking a shit.
Cost per pupil is probably what they're gonna say, but I agree.
It probably is, um...
Well, because we were looking it up, because we're in negotiations right now, so we were looking it up, and so, if it was twenty-one thousand, it was roughly like eighteen thousand per student, but we figured the dif- the difference there is because they're not taking advantage of the budget for transportation and transportation services, and the salary and the benefits that come along with those individuals, so...
But maybe legal can help us also look at the legality piece of open enrollment when that starts.
Mm-hmm.
So if we did have a parent that said, well, look, I want my kid to come at the start of the school year through January, what would that rate look like?
Compared to January.
Knowing that the sending district's gonna be popping in, what is it, eighty percent?
Eighty percent.
You know?
Yeah.
So...
That's fine, I just was wondering what the...
I mean, that's just for me, I just, it helps me make a more educated decision.
Absolutely.
You know?
Nope, I'm sending off him right now.
Thank you. All right, um... I didn't think we were gonna get through that as quickly as we did.
And that cost is for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right.
Right.
So...
What, oh, the, uh...
Yeah.
From Concord.
The other numbers we have.
So tell Concord to get up with their cost per pupil reports.
All right, um, is there anybody here that wants to ask any questions or make any comments regarding the freezer, which is the topic of the public hearing that's currently in session? Okay. Hearing none. I will close the public hearing on that particular issue, and ask for a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the freezer out of the kitchen equipment C R F for the amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred, forty-one dollars and forty-four cents.
Motion by Mrs. Lozay.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. Any discussion? Uh, uh, w- will we, if we approve that purchase tonight, Larry, how quickly?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Try to set a motion.
Okay.
Set a motion that, because...
Right. Did they indicate?
He told, when I talked to them when we first discussed it, he told me that they had all the parts available in stock, but it's gonna be, when they can schedule their technicians to come out and...
Okay. For those of you watching at home, Larry said that the company does have all the parts in, in stock and ready to go, but they will have to hire, uh, get some technicians here to put that freezer in. Okay, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, can we send those minutes, or, to the trustees? All right, um, is there any public participation regarding anything else coming before the board tonight?
I was gonna ask Larry to talk a little bit about the tank, just to kinda give you an idea of what's happening.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, because we were actually informed of that outside of the realm of a meeting, right? We didn't discuss it at the last meeting.
No.
Yeah, go ahead, Larry, if you would, please, because I don't think members of the general public know what's going on.
Good evening. Yeah, I usually don't come with good news, unfortunately. Um, during our annual tank inspection, underground tank inspection that's required by the state every year, the ten thousand gallon tank here at the high school failed the inspection this year. Just a quick overview, it's a composite tank, which has a double wall on it. So there's a, the interior tank that holds the fuel, then there's a liner with a small gap between it, the, the, uh, interstational liner, in case there's a leak. It collects there instead of going into the ground. There's alarm systems on it that anytime there's any liquid in it, sets the alarm off. Unfortunately, ours is getting water in it from somewhere, which means there's a leak somewhere, going from the outside in. And once that's detected, we had to call them in, the state says it has to come in. Uh, they came in once, vacuumed all the water out that was in the interstational liner, came back, did a vacuum test, it failed, didn't hold the vacuum in it, which says there's a leak somewhere. So they dug up the pad at the top where the interstational pipe with the alarm goes in, because that would be the obvious point where there could be a leak. Everything was dry, looked great, so, uh, they reported to the state that it failed that again, which the state then says, you have to close the tank, it can't be used. Uh, so we've had, last Friday, had Lakes Region come back. They vacuumed, had a vac truck here, took what oil we could out, transferred it to Henry Wilson and Valley View to top those tanks off. Unfortunately, fourteen hundred gallons wouldn't fit, so that had to be hauled off. And nobody will reimburse us for that. It has to be go out with its waste oil. So now the tank is reported to the state, it's padlocked, it can't be used. Lakes Region has come up, the only other solution right now, a temporary solution, is you can put up to a thousand gallon temporary tank in without having to go through permitting with D E S. Unfortunately, that's a temporary thing. Thousand gallon tank, we go through three hundred gallons a week or more, something, especially in the winter. So that would be probably deliveries every three days or something. So far, I can tell you, we've invested to have them come up and do the vac, um, the vac test, dig that up. That's cost us four thousand dollars so far. I don't know how much it costs, we didn't get a price for the, what it costs for the truck to come in and vacuum this out. They haven't given me that yet. Uh, they did put a proposal in to install the temporary tank. They do the hookup and all of this, they'd have to find a place to put it, which they've s- looked around at, uh, do piping, suction out the old lines, putting new lines, but that's an initial cost of, uh, looks like eighty-seven hundred and forty dollars for them to do that, then nine hundred and twenty-five dollars a month for rental of the tank. Unfortunately...
That's the thousand gallon?
Yeah, that's the thousand gallon tank.
Did we get numbers on more per minute?
I, trying to work with somebody at the state and see what, I mean, I did some, some quick looking on the internet as to cost of removal and installation of a new ten thousand gallon tank of some type, and you're talking seventy-five to a hundred grand. And that's, I don't believe that's including all the engineering design and permitting from the state that you have to go through. Because I was told the location where the tank is now, they can't just dig it up and put a new tank in, because everything's changed then, it's too close to the school, it's only less than four feet away from the foundation of the school, plus it runs over by the retaining wall, so that wouldn't be a location they can use again.
Now, was that tank put in when we built the school?
That was put in in nineteen ninety-five, yeah. Uh, look, usually, it says the composite tanks usually have a lifespan of thirty, anyways, from... Uh, look, usually, it says the composite tanks usually have a lifespan of thirty, anyways from thirty to fifty years. But if there's changes in the ground or something, that can cause leaks, which, um, can't say for sure, but when we did the parking lot, they did a lot of compacting right next to it or above it there, so that, whether that caused something, don't know. We'd had issues with, had issues with water in it before, but it was only like once every year and a half, and they'd come up and it'd be maybe, you know, half an inch of water that they'd just vacuum out, and that would be it. This time it's, uh, when they did the testing, it had almost twenty-four inches of water in it.
Did the state have any um, suggestions of um, funding sources?
I've, I looked online in the NHDS, there was one thing that said that they had optional funding up to three hundred thousand dollars for replacement of tanks, but then when I pulled it up, it was listed as the state of Arizona, so I don't know why it's on the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. I'm still trying to work with Matt Jones and, uh, Joe Gilbreth at Lakes Region, they're the ones that filed all the paperwork for it, for the closure, because that had to be, had to be filed within twenty-four hours of discovering that they wouldn't pass the test, so.
I know, like, there's gotta be something that, like, just guidance from the state with.
Yeah, the only thing that was sent.
Like situations like this, I mean.
The only thing that was sent, the, the thing that Matt Jones from there sent is that, uh, report within twenty-four hours, prevent or minimize the leak, submit a written, uh, report to the department, and then going through for temporary tanks, you can have up to a thirteen hundred and twenty gallon tank, anything over thirteen hundred and twenty, you have to go through the permit process and submit, uh, New Hampshire PE stamp plans and application at least forty-five days prior to construction. That's all I've got from them so far.
I mean, it's a pretty big deal.
Yeah.
Like, you would think that the state would have some sort of like emergency guideline, guidance on this, so, right, like, especially with like, I don't know, grant funding or.
Yeah, I know they, they do if you have a leak, but unfortunately.
Right?
Yeah, I know, we're preventing a leak.
Yeah.
Uh, so, okay, I have a couple of questions, um. Well, I mean, I can't imagine this, we're locked in on a rate, an oil rate anyway, but will, will that be affected by multiple deliveries a week?
Shouldn't be, shouldn't.
Right? Okay, so, that's on them, um. It looks like with the cost per month and the proposed figure that you gave us, that we're we're gonna be looking for about twenty grand.
It's at least, yes.
I, I mean, I did it, but times twelve months with the thought that we, we may have to design a warrant article
Right.
for the new ten thousand gallon tank.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna contact Matt Jones, but also Robert Stockman, he's come out, we've worked with him before, and see if I can't
Right.
get more, like I said, this just happened.
Warrant article won't help us, though, until.
No, and I'm not su- I know it's, it's not a, a quick and easy process to get the engineering done and have everything passed by the state and stuff.
Right, that's why I feel like like, the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has, they have got to be able, I mean, our schools have gotta stay open.
There's a new America's Schools program, if we have a Department of Education anymore. With, um, this supposedly has a five hundred million dollar program to support energy improvements, including upgrading infrastructures in K-12 public schools. But I don't know if it exists anymore, it existed last August. Because that's when they awarded it, they usually award these, the money in August.
But looking at the figures that Larry presented in the, in the monthly rate, it looks like for twenty grand, we could get through this school year.
Get through the winter.
Why? Well, you mean?
The winter month, the heating months.
Right, the heating months, right. You don't think, when would, when would we not have to use that? What, what, what month usually do we not have to worry about?
This, this year, this year we turned, we backed off and turned it off mostly the end of May, middle of May.
Okay. So, maybe.
The, the only issue with this school, this school is a little different, because we have to keep boiler running longer when school's in session, because that's, because that's the only thing that will keep the domestic hot water
Right.
for the kitchen and stuff.
Oh, right.
Enough.
All right.
I mean, it doesn't use as much if if we've got the rest of the heat turned off.
We got that new temperature control policy that went into effect with the state, so. Have you read that, Larry?
Yeah, I, no, no, I haven't caught up with that yet.
So.
Tonight? Oh. It's on the agenda. Um, all right, so we're gonna have to research some, uh, CRFs and see.
Yeah, and I, like, like I said, I'm, I'm trying to contact them over at the state to get more information going to, and go, and that Joe, Lakes Region Environmental is working with us on. I wanna talk to him and see what, if they have any options, because they do installations and stuff, but.
Does any of our insurance cover any?
I haven't seen anything where it covers anything like
No.
Because they're gonna, they're gonna say that if it's thirty years old, that it's probably reached its life expectancy.
All right, anyone out there that's listening?
If you got a.
I'm sure you're gonna spread the word, so if you're gonna spread the word, maybe you can, uh, get in touch with the school district here, give a helping hand.
If you have a ten thousand gallon oil tank laying around, you wanna donate.
Yes, I happen to have one in your backyard.
You know anyone at the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services that could help us out?
Double walls, we've got the alarms to put in it.
Yeah.
All right.
But I'm actually not joking, I really am serious, if you're listening.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
So do you have something else you wanna bring up? Oh, okay. Uh, so, no public participation, all right. We have manifest to sign, oh, next meeting, let's discuss that. Our next meeting would normally be September first, that's, that is Labor Day.
Labor Day?
Uh, we could go Sep- we could potentially go September second and keep it first Tuesday, third Monday, or for this particular month, we could go the eighth and the twenty-second.
I think we should do the eighth and the twenty-second.
Me too, and then if we're not.
Board agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the first week back of school and.
It's the first day of school, yeah.
I agree. So, our next meeting, folks, will be, uh, September eighth, as the first, uh, Monday in September will be Labor Day. Uh, so we'll meet on September eighth and September twenty-second for this month of September. Uh, at this time, oh, thank you for those of you that, uh, joined us here tonight, and those of you that, uh, watched from home. Uh, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session one under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two A, B, and C for nominations and resignations.
So move.
So move by Mrs. Johnston?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lozay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, folks.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.